I'd like to call to order the Yosemite County College District Board of Trustees regular meeting for Wednesday, November 13, 2024, to order. Zoom meeting access will provide to the public only if the attendance by a trustee under AB 2449 is approved by the board, and I have 2.3 of the agenda. Call to order, please.
So roll call?
Yes.
Trustee Leslie Beggs?
Here.
Trustee Don Davis?
Present.
For the record, trustee Garrett is absent today. Trustee Hinton is waiting in the Zoom waiting room. Trustee Jenny Nicolau?
Present.
Vice President Aguilar?
Is en route.
Is en route. And Board President Richards?
Here.
Quorum is established.
Okay, now we'll go to 2.3. Board member virtual participation pursuant to AB 2449 remote teleconference sentence based on the qualifying emergency circumstances or just cause. Move for approval? Second?
Second.
I'll listen in favor.
Aye.
Post. Now we'll move on. Trustee Nancy Hinton made the request to attend the board meeting remotely under emergency circumstance of AB 2449. So we're going to bring her in.
Trustee Hinton, if you can unmute yourself and show your video.
Am I unmuted?
You're good.
You are unmuted. Can you share your video? Thank you.
So I have to ask, trustee Hinton, are there any other adults in the room with you? If so, what is the general nature of your relationship with them?
There's one other patient who's across the room, and she's asleep.
Very good. Well, based on the fact that you've been approved to be in here, we'll move on. Do we have any statements of conflict?
I think I might have one if they take up last month.
Yes. Okay.
We took it up last month, so.
Oh, you will not have one. Okay. Are there any public comments regarding any closed session items? Seeing none? At this point at 3:07, we'll adjourn to closed session.
I'm sorry.
And I'm scenographer, could you please call, uh, call to order? I'm sorry, I'm out of order, I'm screwing up already. Could we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Jenny, could you lead us?
Ready to loot.
That those allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation under one indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call, please?
Student trustee Castrohan.
President.
Trustee Beggs. Trustee Davis.
President.
Trustee Hinton, if you can unmute yourself and show your video, please. Thank you. Trustee Hinton, present.
Yes.
And can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, well, marker is present, let's move on.
We need to ensure that her video and audio are in working order. Trustee Hinton, can you say something?
I can hear you.
We're not connected to your audio. We can hear you now. Can you say something? Okay.
Very good.
Assistant Nicola.
President.
Vice President Aguilash. Board President Richards.
Here.
For the record, trustee Garrett is absent today. Forum is established.
Okay, 4.4, we have no report out of closed session. 4.5, any trustees with conflicts? Say none. 4.6, any changes to orders of the agenda? Okay, before public comments, I need to read a statement. Before beginning this regularly scheduled board meeting tonight, I'd like to make a few announcements. We are here to conduct the public's business, and we wish to review all items on the agenda and hear from as many people as possible. In order to do so, I'd like to remind everyone that we must follow board policies. For us to complete tonight's board meeting in orderly manner, please remember, each speaker is limited to four minutes per comment. We must all act with decorum and civility. The board may adjourn speakers who act out of order in violation of board policies. In the unlikely event speakers or the audience are disruptive and prevent the orderly continuance of this meeting, we will have to seek the removal of the disruptive individuals. Having said that, I'm going to ask our scenographer to read off the cards. You have four minutes, come up and say what you want to say. You should know that we are not allowed to respond to public comments. Please.
Senator Richards, we have, oh. Here is one raised hand. Jim Solomon, if you can unmute yourself and show your video. Is this on a, just for clarification, is this an item that is agendized or a non-agendized item? You're muted.
Sorry.
We can hear you now.
Welcome, Jim.
Hi, I'm trying to lower my hand and can't seem to lower it. Good evening, my name is Jim Solomon, and I'm a professor of Communication Studies here at MJC, and in my 26th year in this district. I've served as the wife, a president, and lead negotiator, as well as the president-elect and then president of the academic senate. In short, I am uniquely experienced in faculty leadership in this district. I have received both accolades and criticism in faculty leadership. It goes with the territory. Nobody likes to be criticized, but when making criticism, it needs to be factually correct. At last month's board meeting, the MJC Academic Senate President, Giselle Flores, made a blatantly wrong and frankly unprofessional criticism of our faculty liaison to the board, Professor Alan McKissick. She stated, "Tonight, the faculty liaison to the board report was not at the direction of the senate." of the Senate because it would have included the direction from the last meeting." The implication was that Professor McKissick was purposely not following specific directions by the Academic Senate. That was false. In response, I spoke during public comments at the October 10th Academic Senate meeting. I cited that the Senate did not direct the Senate President's message and was instead the unilateral response by her. Instead, she said that making his comment at the board meeting was implied. This is problematic. If the faculty liaison to the board is supposed to automatically say things at the board meeting, then it should be done in the job description, which it is not, or in the Senate rules or bylaws, but it is in neither. Stating that her comments were mere clarification at the board meeting is contorting the facts. The disturbing response, however, was that my criticisms were labeled as what happens to female leaders. In essence, it appears I was being called a sexist in the Academic Senate. Number one, this is a straw man fallacy. I made no mention of anyone's gender or their lack of fitness to lead because of their gender. I simply made an observation and evaluation of what I thought was factually incorrect and unprofessional behavior. Number two, I certainly am appreciative of the Senate President's support of the ADA resolutions I authored and were approved by the Senate, but that does not give her a guilt-free card on her comments about Professor McKissick. Number three, our Senate President has also driven a wider wedge between the Senate and the board in her comments about the board's presentation at NCOR. Her lack of attendance at their presentation while the district paid for her trip to Hawaii was further insulting to trustees who learned she described their presentation as an expletive for cow manure. Why would the board listen to anything that is said by the Senate President after this? Criticism comes with the faculty leadership territory. You don't get to throw your male faculty leader under the bus at a board meeting and then claim you're untouchable because you're a woman in a leadership role. Finally, trustee Leslie Beggs sent a letter to the Academic Senate weeks ago. If the Academic Senate has not seen her response yet, then who is gatekeeping this information? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
So the two comment cards I have are on agendized items.
Okay. Okay, so moving on to item five.
If I may, sorry. Or agendized items, it would be agendized. Professor Hausman.
Yes, hello, I'm speaking on an agendized item tonight.
Okay, which agendized item, so that I can make?
Yes, it is item number five point, or 52 and 53, about the interim chancellor search.
Okay, I will call on you at that time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
There's two others. Bill Anelli.
Yeah, I also want to speak on Agenda Item 5.2 and 5.3. Thank you.
Aisha Saleh.
Hello, I'm here to speak on the same agenda items mentioned by Hans and Bill.
I've made notes.
Very good. So we're very fortunate that we have a senior director of human resources that has over 30 years of experience, and we also have a, our attorney is a labor law, has labor law expertise. So at this time, I'd like to have Ms. Richard and our attorney to please come up here and
Oh, it's on? Okay. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Young. So we'll start with 5.1. As we all know, Chancellor Young will be retiring effective June 30th, 2025. Therefore, the board must determine whether to initiate a recruitment for a permanent or interim replacement. Now, permanent recruitment factors to consider. Selecting a permanent replacement typically brings more stability than an interim. And assuming the recruitment is successful, the district would conduct one recruitment versus two. If the recruitment is not successful, however, the Board of Trustees would have to quickly pivot and recruit an interim. It is possible to complete a permanent recruitment between now and June 30th, 2025, but it cannot be guaranteed due to a variety of factors beyond the district's control. Now, things to consider for an interim recruitment. The maximum that an interim can serve by law is two years. An interim recruitment may provide a professional development opportunity for a current district employee. An interim recruitment would allow the board to take a more deliberate approach recruiting for a permanent replacement. An interim may not be as effective as a permanent replacement because of the temporary nature of their role. We believe the district has enough time to complete an interim recruitment before June 30, 2025. Any questions?
We do have a public comment on this item.
Let's, let's complete the presentation and then we'll take all comments.
Well, that would be the presentation for 5.1.
Okay.
So if you have any questions, or we can move to public.
Any questions from the board? Okay, let's open it up.
Yeah, is, so 5.1 is not an action, is just where are we hearing from folks?
No, it is an action.
5.1?
Correct. It is an action item.
Okay, so if it's an action item, then I think we need to hear from our folks. Maybe there are some who thought maybe 5.2 would be appropriate, but maybe here 5.1. Thank you for your presentation. Are you done, you ready for some questions, or?
Yeah, and I should, I'll mention that 5.2 and 5.3, those agenda items will only be necessary.
Are contingent, right? So hopefully the people that are listening heard that. 5.2 or 5.3 are contingent on how we vote on 5.1. Correct?
Yeah, you want to take a motion and a second to know what the vote is before?
I wanted to get public comment.
Public comment first, okay.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing out. You mentioned that there would be time to conduct an interim. You also mentioned it would be time to conduct a formal search for a chancellor, but the concern is if the, if the search for chancellor, say, isn't successful, or we don't come to consensus on a choice, then what happens in that case? So let's imagine we do a search and then it's, it's, we don't get a consensus on the board on a final candidate?
I believe if the search is not successful, then what would happen is that you would have to quickly pivot and probably backfill with an interim to hold the space until you can conduct another search.
Right, so, so your search is unsuccessful, you pivot, point an interim, essentially, unless you think there's time to go out again. Right, listen, y'all, thank you. I'll, I don't have any other comments for you, but as, as we're hearing from our public comments, I might have something to share with our trustees.
Let's take public comment then. Okay, let's, let's pivot to public comment now.
So first public comment is by Amanda Hughes.
Good evening, I'm excited to be here tonight. As a mother of a student and the wife of a faculty member who's been here nearly 20 years, and a resident that works very closely with the college, I'm here tonight to just make my voice heard and to talk about, I really want to honor Dr. Dawn Davis for bringing this to the board in October. I'm really disheartened that this process hadn't started earlier because it is true that it takes a long time to hire for someone of this position. This is a very important position to the community. This sets the tone and culture for two incredibly important community colleges for our region. I'm really hoping that you take this process seriously, that you do a national search. We deserve the best. We deserve a deep talent pool, and it starts at the top, and I hope that we have a collaborative, transparent process to recruit and select this individual that involves engagement with faculty, administration, students, and the community. We need to know the process, and it needs to hurry up, because we are going to lose time, which is going to limit the quality of the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
We had three others, but those are 5.2, unless they've changed. So Professor Hauselman? If you can unmute and share your video, please.
It's not letting me start my video. There you go. Thank you. All right, so, thank you very much. So, good evening, members of the Board of Trustees and community members. My name is Hans Hauselman, and I'm an instructor of history at Modesto Junior College. I'm here tonight as a concerned community member, as well as an MJC faculty member, to speak about the process of selecting a new chancellor for our district. The chancellor is a vital leader whose vision and decisions shape the future of our colleges and success of our students. And because this decision is so important, it is essential that the process to find a new chancellor is open, inclusive, and transparent. I'm deeply concerned about the lack of communication regarding how this search will proceed and the decision to pause the process until after the election. This does, this delay sends the wrong message about the importance of this role and risks limiting our ability to find the best possible candidates. Starting early is key to ensuring we attract a diverse and highly qualified pool of applicants, and it allows all stakeholders to engage meaningfully in the process. Additionally, there are serious concerns about bypassing a transparent external search process in favor of appointing an internal candidate as an interim chancellor. While interim leadership can help maintain continuity during a transition, it should not be treated as a substitute for a rigorous and inclusive selection process. Automatically promoting an internal candidate or moving an internal candidate to an interim position without considering other qualified applicants limits the opportunity to bring fresh perspectives and innovative ideas to our district. A competitive process ensures that the best candidate, someone who aligns with the needs of our students, employees, and community, is selected. In the past, our district has involved representatives from all parts of the community, including faculty, staff, students, and local leaders, in searches for key positions. This kind of collaboration fosters trust and ensures that the decisions reflect the diverse voices of those who will be most impacted by the new chancellor's leadership. I strongly urge the board to prioritize transparency and inclusivity in this process by clearly communicating the timeline, steps, and opportunities for community involvement. Our students, employees, and community deserve a process that reflects the values of openness and collaboration that we strive to uphold. Thank you for your time and for considering the voices of the entire district community in this important decision.
Thank you very much.
Bill Anelli? Share your video and unmute your audio.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
I teach philosophy here at MJC, and, and I would think everybody agrees we deserve the best at MJC in term, and the district in terms of a chancellor. Someone mentioned this to me, I looked at the resolution, we have a resolution in our Senate, and I thought, you know, I think our board is fine, I think the board wants the best for our, for our district. I took a look at the interim assignment for chancellor position guidelines, and here's what the guidelines say that concern me. This is an interim position that can last up to two years, if I have that right. It says that in the guidelines under time limits on interim appointments. It's just three trustees who are going to make a choice, and it looks like there really isn't a process outlined with community input. I mean, maybe I have it wrong, but we're talking about needing to select an interim by the end of June, June 30, right? Chancellor Young's tenure ends June 30th, so we have quite some time if we need to do an interim. So I, I'm just, would like clarification about why for the interim position, we don't have an effort to really include, have a larger committee, have a lot more input, et cetera, et cetera. So that's my, my concern, I'm a little puzzled by this. It looks, it looks like this is, it looks like an intended, and also, my other concern is that the recruitment period is only five days. Like, this is important. This is a person who leads our district, and the interim position can last two years and often can become the permanent chancellor. So why would we limit the recruitment period to five days? I don't understand why only three trustees. Why do we not have a more of an input to this? And I just think, as a philosopher, it's really important that we hear from multiple perspectives, multiple sides, even those whom we don't agree with, and I, I just asked the board to reconsider this process for choosing interim and really broaden it to make sure we have robust community input, college input for the interim position. We have time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. First of all, I ask for your grace in that I meant to make my font bigger before I printed this out, and I forgot that part, and I never carry my reading glasses. So, good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Young. I'm Dr. Jessica Brennan, a professor of child development at MJC. I'm grateful to have this time to address you all this evening. I started attending these meetings three and a half years into my time at MJC, and in January of 2023, at my very first in-person meeting, I addressed the board during public comments. My comments that day were related to the vacancy for president, as the role had been vacated following the December board meeting. In my comments that night, I urged you to consider that this constant turnover in executive lead, what this constant turnover in executive leadership means for our students. Fast forward a year and a half later, and at the May 2024 board meeting, Chancellor Young announced his impending retirement, giving the district ample notice of 13 months to develop a process for hiring, convene a hiring committee that is, that represents the diversity of our constituent groups across colleges and communities. And each meeting after that one, I anticipated a discussion on what that process would look like, because as you may have gathered, if you've noticed that I'm here at every meeting despite the fact that I'm not speaking, I'm curious by nature. Last month, when it was reported that the tri-chairs were waiting of an impending, because of an impending election, I was disheartened. It seemed like there was a reason that this was being pushed out, but I couldn't determine what it was. Then yesterday, when reading the agenda, suddenly something stood out to me. A process being developed for an interim chancellor search, but not a process being shared for a permanent chancellor search. While I see the condition that these agenda items will only be necessary if the board directs HR to initiate recruitment for an interim chancellor, I couldn't help but wonder why the process for an interim is being defined without a process for a permanent chancellor also being shared. This order of operations implies to me and others I've spoken to that the plan is to continue to push this item out and hire an interim chancellor who can serve in that position no more than two years. That brings us back to our problem of a lack of stability in executive leadership. Here at MJC, we finally have stable and functional leadership under the direction of Dr. Sanders and his awesome executive cabinet. We wouldn't want to lose somebody so crucial to that stability. What the hell? Columbia's president is currently being held to a vote of no confidence by faculty and classified professionals. This doesn't seem like an ideal time to do anything which may cause further instability may cause further instability for the college. Finally, the determination that the interim search committee would consist only of three trustees does not go far to earn the trust of your constituents when you will not include faculty, staff, students, or community members in the decision to appoint someone who will hold such a crucial role in our district. I thank you for listening, and I hope you understand that the feedback you hear tonight regarding the chancellor search comes from people who very much care about this community college district.
Thank you very much.
Well, Flores? Trustee Hinton, we are getting some feedback from your audio.
Since my request to move my report to before the action items was denied by the chair, I will be reading my report during this time. Good evening, Chancellor Young and trustees. I've been asked to read the following comments on behalf of concerned faculty in response to the action items on the agenda regarding the chancellor search process. While these comments are provided to me by individual faculty, they are not in conflict with the resolution passed by the academic senate. One, the five-day minimum time limit for an internal search doesn't allow for a diverse pool of candidates. Two, the optics of a committee made solely of board members gives the impression of a lack of transparency, possibly a self-serving effort, and predetermined decision for an internal candidate who has gained favor with the board. Three, soliciting informal feedback as the only involvement of constituent groups without allowing appointed representatives to be on the actual committee is performative and doesn't allow the meaningful contributions to the final decision. Four, there are no students mentioned as a group that the board plans to seek participation from. Five, there are still seven months before Chancellor Young's retirement. It is unnecessary and doesn't seem to be in the best interest of the district or the college community, which begs the question of what the motivation is for a five-day timeline. Six, the instability in executive administration that has plagued our district is only made worse by appointing an internal interim before doing a national search when it is completely unnecessary, given the amount of notice given by the chancellor. Seven, MJC's administrators are finally stable and functional, so we don't want to lose someone crucial to our college functioning. And Columbia College's administration is unstable, with a vote of no confidence on the president currently agendized at their next academic senate meeting. So there isn't a reasonable option for Columbia College to provide the district. Why do an internal search under these circumstances? I will now read you. Hopefully you have time. I will now read you the resolution, FA24B: Immediate Transparency in the Chancellor Search Process and Inclusion of Participatory Governance Stakeholders, which was provided by the senate in the last meeting, approved by the senate in the last meeting. Whereas, the current Yosemite Community College District Chancellor announced his retirement at the May 2024 Board of Trustees meeting, providing the Board of Trustees advance notice of the impending vacancy in the chancellor position by June 30, 2025. And whereas, despite requests from constituents across the district, the chancellor search tri-chairs have not communicated with the public on the process for external recruitment for potential chancellor applicants, which has led to decreased community trust that the process will be transparent and include stakeholders at each level of the search. And whereas, comments made by the board at the October 10 board meeting asserting that the chancellor search tri-chairs unilaterally decided that the chancellor search would be paused until after the election devalues the importance of the role of the chancellor by delaying the search for a replacement, jeopardizes the effectiveness of the chancellor search, and is not in the best interest of YCCD's students, employees, or the campus community. And whereas, starting the search process early allows for increased opportunities to attract a diverse pool of qualified applicants. And YCCD Board Policy 2431 CEO Selection states, "The search processes shall be fair, open, transparent, and shall comply with relevant regulations." And whereas, the standard practice of linking an AP to board policies has not been followed with BP 2431, the policy on hiring a CEO chancellor making our district out of compliance with Standard 4.I governing board policies and procedures for selecting and regularly evaluating its chief executive officer of the ACCJC.
Okay. No, go ahead. You had a report in addition to, so you could have more time.
Okay. Thank you. Whereas, YCCD Board Policy 2510: Participation in Local Decision-Making asserts that the board is committed to its obligation to ensuring the appropriate members of the district participate in developing recommended policies for board action and administrative procedures for chancellor under which the district is governed and administered. And whereas, the CCLC has recommended that districts develop a timeline for a chancellor search process that is clearly communicated and allows for a comprehensive search and selection, and that all stakeholders are knowledgeable about the steps in the process, responsibilities, and authority of the board, consultant, and search committee. Whereas, past practice in the YCCD search and hiring of a chancellor has been to establish a committee with individuals representing the community and proportional representation from each constituent group within the district. Therefore, the Academic Senate of Modesto Junior College urges the Yosemite Community College Board of Trustees to provide immediate transparency in the chancellor search process. And therefore, the Academic Senate of Modesto Junior College demands the timely and mutually agreed upon development of an administrative procedure to correspond with BP 2431 that includes constituent representation in the selection process in order to correct the current lack of transparency and show a commitment to prioritizing the needs of faculty, students, classified professionals, administration, and community members. And therefore, the Academic Senate of Modesto Junior College calls upon the Board of Trustees to mirror past practices in the current chancellor search hiring procedures, approved in a first and final reading on the 6th of November, 2024.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Aisha Saleh. If you can unmute yourself and show your audio or show your video.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Graciela. Hello, everyone. I'll try and be as brief as possible, knowing we're limited on time. A lot of my sentiments have already been shared by other faculty members who have spoken, so I'll just try and highlight some of my biggest concerns when it comes to the handling of the search for our chancellor replacement position once Chancellor Young's retirement goes into effect. I guess I'll start by saying I was also concerned and disconcerted with the fact that with, you know, like 13 months advance notice, we're over the six-month mark here, and this is the first meeting where any sort of action is being taken to move the process forward in the search for a chancellor. I don't think that's conducive to a successful search. And my concern is that using the fact that we only have seven months left before we need to have a replacement as a reason to justify doing an interim position rather than a permanent replacement position feels somewhat disingenuous to decide not to start until after six months, and then say the lack of time is the reason we can't do a permanent replacement feels like we've caused the problem that's now leading to the supposed need for an interim search. I also don't believe it's necessary. We have a seven-month period to still go out and do a national search and try and get a broad, diverse pool to replace this chancellor position, and I think we should do that. I know that Catherine Pritchard, in her report, was talking about how a successful search can't be guaranteed in a permanent search, but a successful search can't be guaranteed in an interim one either. So I think that our community and our college district, our students, faculty, classified professional deserve for us to at least try and do a replacement position. Sorry, I'm getting feedback from another video, and it's making it hard for me to.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay. I think we have plenty of time. I think that we deserve to have at least an attempt at a permanent replacement before making a decision to then do an interim. An interim should be a last resort. It shouldn't be where we start when you have 13 months to replace a chancellor. I also am concerned with the five-day search period if there is a decision to do an interim search, and the fact that no constituent representation has been mentioned in that process. Past precedent has always included proportional representation. I don't know that students were included in the past, but I hope they are. This time around, I think that their involvement in this process is crucial, and they've been included in other high-level hiring searches in the past, like MJC's presidential search. That completes my comments. I really hope we go for a permanent position. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Patrick Krebs?
I am on duty tonight and in uniform.
Feel safer.
Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of Classified as CSC president. I was going to address this in my association report, but because of the action item being before that, I've decided to step up. Many items I was going to touch on in my association report were already well addressed by the previous speakers. There is a very valid concern amongst Classified that have been voiced to CSC leadership about the lack of transparency, the rush. I'm probably going to take some criticisms for saying this, but I'm going to go ahead and say it. There is a persistent rumor that the board has a particular candidate in mind for a interim position, and likely action items 5.2 and 5.3 kind of play into that rumor. It's just a rumor. But there is a concern amongst Classified and clearly amongst the other constituency groups about how this process is playing out. And it was wasting a lot of time from when Chancellor Young had announced back in May. So thank you for the time.
Next speaker.
Lisa Shet?
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. Continuing on what, my name's Lisa Shet with Modesto Junior College. Continuing on what others have already said regarding an interim versus permanent search to replace the chancellor due to his retirement, I want to share my concern for how an interim appointment will create instability at a time when we have made progress in that regard. Although we can't go back and start a search sooner, although we did have time, I urge you as a board to move forward with a permanent search versus an easy interim replacement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
We have Ruth Perez and Joanna Romero that would like to come up together.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. I come to you solely as a student, not as an ASMGC representative. I want to make clear that our college has just now been able to receive a stable president for a permanent position. That being said, we want and we request that students be a part of the chancellor recruitment. I personally have been a part of the presidential recruitment for two of the recruitment sessions, one failed, one successful. I know what a failed one would look like, and I sincerely do not want our district, our colleges, or our students and community to be put through that again, especially when we're speaking of such an important position.
As a student, you know, even though I've only been here, like, I've been here for a year, and, you know, I've been learning, you know, how our trustees and our chancellor and how the whole system works. And honestly, I just want our students to have, you know, a stable cabinet, and, you know, like, our students deserve the best. Like, you know, as a student ambassador, I see, you know, I interact with students on a day-to-day basis, and, you know, like, you know, we have good students, you know, and they deserve the best.
That being said, as a student representative and as a student worker, when things are having to go through and things need to be approved, having unstable presidential or chancellor positions or any position in general, it hinders the activities that MJC and our sister college can perform, whether it be helping students, helping our community, outreach, anything will be affected by this. So we really urge you to please consider including our students, our community members, our faculty, our staff from both colleges into the search.
Thank you.
Celeste Randolph?
Trustee, my name is Celeste Randolph. I'm coming here as a student. As you guys know, something like Jenga or a deck of cards, when it is unstable, it is so hard for the rest of the foundation to be held together. Because of this, if we constantly have the rotation of people, it is going to be so hard for the rest of the board to simply be stable, and that affects everyone, but especially students. Students are the utmost focus of YCCD. You truly need to put them first and realize how much this decision could affect them. It is so important that we give our students the best experience possible. I have truly experienced a great experience at MJC. I believe so because of the stability that we have between staff, faculty, and the president, Dr. Brian Sanders. I believe we need that same stability for the chancellor. I truly believe we should include many people in this decision. We need to hear many voices, even if those voices aren't ones you agree with, from community to staff to faculty to even students. It is important that we keep this foundation going great.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
I don't have any more on my list unless if anyone in the Zoom meeting would like to raise their hand or anyone in this.
Anyone else? I'd like to call Catherine and Travis back up to clarify some of the comments that were made, and then we'll have comments from the Board of Trustees and questions. Questions about who's going to be involved, how transparent is the search, you know, why an interim, those kinds of things. And as HR professionals, I'd like you to talk about that, then I, you know, try to answer some of those questions, and then we'll bring it back to the board for further discussions.
This one?
Okay. So one thing I did hear was the concern about a five-day recruitment period. That is, can be extended. That was based off of our current interim recruitment process. So that's something that could be adjusted in a process.
There was questions about the trustees serving on the search, as the search committee, but then what input other constituent groups would have.
So from what I understand from this process, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that there will be input garnered from each constituency group in the interim process as well. So it wouldn't be without inclusivity and transparency.
In the draft that's been presented to you tonight, it is simply that. So if there are changes that you want to make, you could, you know, simply take action and direct staff to make those changes. But as Catherine mentioned, the proposed draft process mirrors what the district currently does for interim management positions with a few changes. for interim management positions with a few changes acknowledging that, you know, this is the chancellor role.
Back to the board. Trustee Davis?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and I appreciate all of the comments. So my preference was that last month, we would have had an action on whether we would go with a search firm or we would use our HR department to essentially do the search for a permanent chancellor. And I wasn't successful in having that item agendized as an action item. So I said, well, let's have it this month. And when the agenda came out and I see how it was laid out, it wasn't exactly what I was thinking. However, the time to do a permanent search, I think we still have the time to do this. The question about process and transparency and what would it look like? Well, if we made the decision to go with a search firm, of course, the search firm is going to bring their suggestions because they're professionals in the process. And here's how they might suggest, and there'll be different search firms, and then the board would select one, and we have a process or a template of a process to follow. And that would be shared and would be public. If we have the action tonight to imagine that we had a search firm, well, that would have to go out and we'd receive from search firms, and we'd have an opportunity to vote on, yes, we like a particular one. And then we'd get that firm here and we'd start the process according to their suggestions, and we might tweak it just a bit. And in the event that it wasn't successful, in my mind, that's when you have an interim appointment because it's going to take time to do that again, and maybe you don't want to go with the same search firm. But that was the kind of conversation I was hoping to have and talk the pros and cons. I'm not like pro-search firm or pro-in-house process, though I think for this position as highly, you know, as high-profile, that you really, really want to do it well and do it right and have a search firm for the permanent search. I don't get it. Why the actions to have an interim appointment when we could potentially see a permanent appointment in April? If we, you know, got on the process and did it well. Appreciate all of your comments. I know the trustees here, when we hear, we listen, we take the input. I would just say that if you're on this side of the dais and thinking about this role, recognize that we really have one person that we take advice from, we give advice to, we direct, we receive input, we don't direct these folks, we don't hire, we have one that we do. And it's important that we bring someone in that would work together with us, that we could work together with. That's why we go through the process. And essentially, the process would provide finalists that the trustees would interview and make a decision on and say, okay, this would be the person that we believe we could interact with, we could take advice from, we could give feedback to, and provide goals and objectives for the upcoming year. I want to thank Dr. Young. He's been here. He's had to deal with different board members in this whole process. He's done a wonderful job. That's really our one employee, right? And we're a team. And that's an important decision. And in my opinion, you've got to make the decision to use the professional process to do the national search, get a person here, and then vet them, interview them, see if they're the right fit for this community, for this college, with their experiences all, and can this governance team work together with that person for the benefit of the district and our students ultimately? So, and that's where I still stand. And I would appreciate the board taking my opinion on moving forward with a search firm and doing a permanent search.
Trustee Beggs?
First off, this is a decision the board takes very seriously. This is our one, this is our only employee, and we have had stability. Our chancellor's been here since 2017, right, in this role. So we have had very stable leadership. And personally, I'm opposed to a search firm. I think you invest a lot of money in a search firm. You don't know them, they don't know you, they bring you people, and then you feel obliged to pick somebody because you've spent $50,000 or whatever it is on a search firm. We have in-house people who are capable of doing the work, and they do a lot of the work anyway when we have a search firm. So that's just my personal opinion on that. I prefer in-house. But it's a big decision. Some people interview very well, but until you work with them, you don't know what it's like. I like that we had an internal candidate in the past, or our past two presidents were internal. And I'm kind of, and I'll give credit to trustee Nicolau, she said this a long time ago. She said, "I want a date before I get married." And that's kind of how I feel about the chancellor search because it's so important. I want to know what somebody's really like on a day-to-day basis before we say, "This is the one." That's just my opinion on that.
Trustee?
Yeah, hi. So being as a student trustee, I got to learn a lot about this role, and I'm still learning about this, like how the district and how everything works. You know, in the crowd, Professor Baru there was my first professor here at MJC. But in this role, and I really got to learn really like how important, you know, these roles and the backbone of this district at the school and the importance for me as a student. I think that having, as you guys mentioned, you guys do reach out to groups for like community members, but I think having students, staff, community members, and hearing out their opinion, and, you know, just seeing so many people come and comment the last few board meetings. You know, I've been here, I'm only going to be here for a year sadly, and it seems like a long time, but yet it goes by really fast. I think that as a board, you know, seeing that there's so much passion, so much love for the district, and, you know, seeing that now that there's a lot of stability at MJC as well. Thank you to President Sanders. I think it's important that there is a hiring process and that it's, you know, a permanent one. And if there, as Don Davis had mentioned, if there isn't one that's going to come out, then that's where the interim. But first, going with the hiring process for the permanent position, I think that just, to me, that would make more sense and then transition over to the interim if needed.
Trustee Hinton, are you able to comment?
I believe so. Can you hear me? Hold on.
Your audio.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, but volume. Nancy Hinton, are you able to comment?
I believe so. Can you hear me?
I'm not hearing your audio. No, she's not muted. Are you muted on your phone?
Raising her hand. Are we able to get her to talk?
She's unmuted.
Nancy, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Hear us, but we can't hear her.
Okay, maybe somebody can work on that. Trustee Nicolau?
I want to start by saying I really appreciate the comments and the opinions shared tonight, and I would agree with every single one of you. I want to hire the very best chancellor to lead us. If there's one thing we can all agree on, it is that I want the best person for us. I believe in this district, and I appreciate everyone, and especially how much this matters to you. That's what pulls us together. We have a common goal to see this district succeed, and we want the very best. We need to remember that. We may have differences, but we want the best. To be clear, I was the first one who brought up interim, and I'm very happy to admit that. As trustee Beggs mentioned, I want to date someone and fall in love before I get married. I don't want to put a ring on it and marry the wrong person and find out who they are later. I do believe that you see the very best of the best in the interview process. And I believe that throughout time, you see someone's true colors. And perhaps, and what should happen, is you hire the best, and those true colors are true, and you find out that you hired the very best person for the right reason. But I do think that we need to trust our professionals. I think our internal HR team, and based on my understanding, when we've hired search firms in the past, our team still does the lion's share of the work. And so I think to be fiscally responsible, we need to look at where that work is conducted. We need to trust our professionals. And then I'll also add that recently, at the Aman Board of California, we had a CEO for 20 years. He was incredible. He gave us a one-year notice that he was retiring. Our HR department did not handle the search. What happened was there was a constituency group of board members, where a 12-board member, three of those were part of the search committee. It came down to the board who has set the strategy, the vision, the mission for our industry. And those three picked the individual that was best because they're the ones essentially who determines where this industry is going. I didn't hire my boss. I didn't hire my CEO. I've been involved in interviews, and I could certainly share my opinion. But ultimately, it's up to me as an employee to trust my board. It's up to our district to trust the board. We've been voted by our community, and we want the very best. So if you want to know where I stand, I'll tell you this. I believe we should go for interim, fall in love, and then get married. And I believe we should trust our internal experts and take this internally with our HR department.
Next, President Aguilar.
Okay. Is it working? One of the things that, I mean, I agree with our board and a lot of the same comments, so I'm going to try not to make the same comments. But this is important. All I want is to make sure we get the best chancellor to represent us because the community that elected myself and everybody else here, we represent them and as their taxpayers who make this possible. So I want the best chancellor we can get. I think we all agree on that. In regards to the, I guess we're going to do Don, and I respect what everybody believes on, so I'm going to do the two of them. Start with the firm and ourselves. I don't have a strong position either way. I've been involved with like three searches so far, and of all the three searches, we haven't had good success with firms. I mean, just being honest with everybody, I don't know why. We just haven't. I don't know their process, why we don't get that many good candidates. I don't know what it is. We just haven't had a good. So on that point, I can go either way. I would like to give our people that work for us, that do most of the work anyways, I would like to give them an opportunity to see what kind of work they do because we trust them and we think they do a great job. On the other side, on the other one, I can see both sides, but I really believe that the best way to go, that I prefer myself, and I respect everybody else's opinion. I think we should go, I mean, my opinion, and try to get a permanent replacement, so. But again, we have different opinions amongst the board, and whatever opinion goes, I will respect that and I will support it even if it's not what I believe.
Are we able to get trustee Hinton to speak?
Can you hear me?
Very good. Welcome, Nancy. Comments on what you've heard?
Yes. A few comments. I think that we need to take seriously, as been mentioned, the hiring of the chancellor. I would very much like to be involved in his replacement. I also would like to ask that the Ashi, sorry, wrong, wrong. Ashay, God, I used to get it right. Now my brain doesn't work.
Aisha?
Aisha and also her counterpart have more respect for the board than has been to where it was a few years ago. Lately, it's very disheartening when we hear things and things are said that shows that there's no respect. And we need to have the respect, and if there's not respect, then it needs to be brought to us in a proper way. Because I think that we need to have a good working relationship between us, and right now, that's not there. And we've got the biggest and most important position for the campus that is coming out right now. And we need to be honest and upfront and have an open discussion. Have a pow-wow, and let's get things straight. You know, a few years ago, when Jim Solomon was president, or not Jim Solomon, I'm sorry, Chad, and I went to speak to the people in the different groups. And, you know, there was some rebelliousness there, but when we spoke, we were able to work things out. Now we're coming up to another time for a pow-wow and get things worked out so that when we sit down together, that we come together in a one-like-minded people respecting one another. And that's just one of my comments, and I'm sorry if you guys take offense to it. But I've gone through hell and back in the last few months, and that's just the way I feel. Probably be a little more honest than I would have a few months ago.
Thank you, Nancy.
And I would like to make sure that we are given opportunity for those that are interested in serving to enter their name and say why they want to serve, not just because, oh, it'll give me a prestige on a on a whatchamacallit, but that they really want to serve on the committee for the looking out for a new chancellor. And Chancellor Young, I'd like to And Chancellor Young, I'd like to
Blaster.
You're muted, Nancy.
Steve. And I appreciate all that you've done. And I appreciate the majority of the time that there's honesty and integrity. But once again, we need to continue to have that open discussion of honesty amongst all of us. And I'm going to close it with that. If anybody has any comments or questions, feel free to contact me. My phone number is (985) 4133. So go ahead and give me a call or speak now. Thank you.
Makes concluding comments and then bring it back to Catherine and Travis. First of all, the tri-chairs have been talking about this for quite some time. I want to thank everybody in this room that's come in and made comments. We've heard you. There's definitely a difference of opinion as to when this search should have started. We've done a lot of research, and we just felt that with an election coming up, it wasn't the right thing to move forward. Election's now been settled. And we're also working with accreditation. But I share what Trustee Davis said. If we decide to go with a permanent search, I don't have any doubt that we get that done. But I go back to what a couple of my colleagues said in that I think we've got some really strong internal people. I really would like to see them given an opportunity. I think having a year or more to make a decision would be a good idea. I don't like search firms. I was a college athletic director for 40 years and never used one once. I've watched us use three search firms. And frankly, I don't think they did a very good job. And I think they worked hard, but I didn't think it'd work. Having said that, any closing comments from our team here about any of this?
No, just wanted to clarify the search firm piece. That's item 5.4. So 5.1 is just the decision on what direction you want to go in the recruitment.
Okay, so I'm going to bring it back to the board. What do you want to do?
I move to move forward with the interim position.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All those in favor? Let's do roll call.
They'll all have to be roll call.
Okay.
We should hear from our on the action.
No, he already had.
This had a motion.
No, he had a comment. You have to go first. You're right. You're absolutely right. You have to go first. You're absolutely right. I appreciate that. Your comments before we vote?
I already gave my comment earlier, but I, for the interim, no.
All right, please take the roll call.
Trustee Aguilar. Trustee Beggs.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Oh.
Trustee Hinton.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
Trustee Richards.
Yes.
The vote is for in favor to oppose motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to 5.2.
All right. So the district has a process for conducting a permanent chancellor recruitment, but not for interim chancellor recruitment. Based on the board's decision tonight to pursue an interim recruitment, we have prepared a draft process, which is largely based on the district's interim recruitment process for management positions. The draft process is in your packet, and we'd be happy to answer questions, which I think we've already covered. But any other questions?
So I have a question. So you said the minimum is five days?
Yes, the minimum is five days.
What's the max?
We have not done a max. We haven't gone beyond five days. Our recruitment process is five. Sometimes we've gone beyond. If the five days hasn't garnered a diverse deep pool, and then we'll extend it. But there is no set rule.
I'd like to see that extended to a minimum of 10 working days personally.
I would too, and I think it could even go longer. But as a minimum of 10 working days, that's a long application to fill out.
I have a question. Just to suppose, pretend you don't get an interest. In what? Say there wasn't, there wasn't an applicant internal. Imagine.
I would, if you couldn't get an internal applicant, I would recommend an external search.
Other questions?
Just for the record, I support that as well. There's two sides to the coin. And one side, regardless of if it works, there's another side to that. So my hope would be that this is successful. Should it not be, I would see this agendaized for a future board meeting. The conversation exists again. We go differently.
Let me just clarify that for a moment. So you're saying internal only at first, and then, or you're open to internal and external from the start? That was, I was asking for Jenny to clarify.
Honestly, I don't have a super-strong opinion on that. I don't have someone in mind, someone that I want. I want the best candidate. I still firmly believe in the interim position. That's been passed. I'm open to a conversation. I'd like to hear the board's perspective on internal only versus internal versus external.
Okay, so, you know, I was never very good at dating. Didn't have much. But I guess if you could cast a broader net and, you know, they were willing, maybe, you know, I'd look at that. So if we're going to have an interim, you know, maybe you have folks inside and outside the district who would be interested in the interim or a dating period.
Just for clarification, you can run internal and external concurrently. You don't have to do it.
You said you can, right?
You can, you can if you
Oh, I thought you said you can't.
Oh, you can. C-A-N, can.
Oh, okay.
Trustee Aguilar. Vice President Aguilar.
I don't know. I'm an English learner. I agree with Dawn. It seems like I'm agreeing with Dawn today. So if we're going to do that, let's do the widest we can and get, try to get the best candidate even for interim, so.
And I think because we're talking about dating here, we're not looking for a lame duck. We want to actually see somebody, how they would work if they were, as if they were a permanent candidate, not as if they were a lame duck who's just a placeholder. We're not looking for a placeholder. We're wanting to see how somebody actually behaves in this environment.
Any other comments, trustees? I think we had a public comment.
We do have a public comment. Lisa Shet. There's a public comment. Travis, there's a public comment.
I'm back.
Welcome.
So with the decision to go with an interim versus permanent search, I just want the board to really consider the timeline. And as important as managers are in our district, to base a chancellor search on the previous procedure for hiring interim managers is like apples and oranges. So I'm curious whether HR or anyone at the district has looked at what other districts do in this situation. Have you looked at how other districts handle interim chancellor searches? And I would encourage you to do that if you have not already done so. And I just appreciate your time. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Please come up. But this time, you only get four.
With this internal search, how many applicants is going to be considered a decent pool? We don't really have a whole giant pool of qualified applicants, which is why an external search would have been a better decision. So thank you to the trustees who voted in that way and actually heard us.
Anyone else?
Bill and Ellie, if you can unmute yourself and share your audio.
Yeah, I just want to respond to a couple of arguments. One argument is that search firms cost a lot of money. You spend money, they don't know you, you don't know them. Well, you know, and then we have in-house people. I mean, the implication is that we would never go outside, never go outside our district to hire anybody. Because you only know the people, you can only date people that you, right? If we're going to do the dating analogy, who are you going to date, right? You're going to date people who you know in your community, right? And what if that's kind of a limited pool? What if there's an amazing person who lives out of state or who lives far away? That would have been a great match for us, right? So I just think we need to maybe move past the dating analogy a little bit. It just worries me that that's kind of our reasoning here. I think it's good to have a, of course, it can be great people in-house. Of course, you should know people. But maybe we could have, and maybe we don't hire a search firm, but maybe there's some way to really open up this process in a robust way so that we're getting to know people that we might hire from outside, right? It just really worries me that we're kind of using this dating analogy. I, yeah. And the other idea, and then again, the other issue about what do other community colleges do? It's just hard for me to believe that like all search firms are just really bad at this, right? Like, it's just all really, really bad. I think that there must be a way for us to, however we do it, really spend our time and include lots of stakeholders. And again, if it's five days or 10 days and only three folks who are deciding on our interim, that looks, the optics don't look good. And finally, why did this not happen? Why this, he announced in May. We got 13 months. And why we're doing this now? I understand with the elections, we wanted to postpone the elections. Well, we should have begun this in June. So this really doesn't look good to me. I think, and I think there might be someone who's in-house who's wonderful, but let's expand it to both. Please, please do that. And let's get beyond dating analogies. Thank you.
Any other comments? Please come up.
It takes me a while to get up here. I'm going to leave the dating comments behind. I'm a 45-year-old woman who's not married, so I'm done with that conversation, right? But my question is, and I know that you can't answer public comments, but I hope that you can answer this clarification. How long is the initial contract period for a chancellor?
It can't be more than a year.
Okay, so that, so, no, I'm sorry. The interim is two years, according to the documents we read today.
One to two.
But if you hire a chancellor, a permanent chancellor, how long is their initial contract?
I'm going to guess less than three, no, more than three years.
Okay, so that can be truncated as well, right? And dating could happen within that truncated time period. And so if we are talking about, now, you know, we're talking about five days or 10 days. Well, now if we're talking about an external search, how are we going to attract talent from elsewhere?
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. I'm going to close public comment. I think what I heard is we'd like maybe 10. Catherine, Travis, could you come back up here, please?
There is one online.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'll reopen the public comment. I didn't see your hand.
Aisha.
That's okay, thank you. It took me a little while to find the react button to raise the hand on here. So I appreciated the questions and the decision to expand that five-day application period. I do think extending it will allow us to have more applicants. I mean, it's a long application, and I'm assuming there's a need for like letters of recommendation and that sort of thing. And that takes time. And people, if the interim search is going to be open to both internal and external candidates, external candidates don't know that that's going to be happening yet. So they do need time to be able to prepare an application to apply. What I'm hoping is that there could also be a discussion about the constituent input. I heard Catherine say when she was up here the last time, sorry, I need a little more clarification. She mentioned that constituent groups are included by being able to give feedback. But I would like some clarification about what exactly that means. Because I know what I would like to see would be what past precedent has been, which is not just to give feedback or comments in the initial process and to then have a three-person committee make the recommendation to the board, but to have a full search committee that includes constituent representation throughout the process so that everyone has a true say. And so I'm wondering if that's something that's being considered currently.
Thank you. Okay, so getting back to 5.2, the item before us. I think what I heard is that people would like to see it extended to 10 working days and also open it up at least 10, a minimum of 10. How long would you like it?
I'm sorry. Well, I mean, if we are, two things. If we are going to consider, and I think we should, the outside, then 10 days is not that long enough to give everybody a notice of whoever wants to apply. So I would think even longer than two.
How long? Give me a number.
Dawn, help me out here.
30 days?
Well, maybe instead of, instead of, I still think we have time for that. Why not give them 30 days?
Okay. Could we change this process to have 30 days and open it up to internal and external?
Yes, you can. You can go, usually, external recruitment, the standard is three to six weeks.
Do you, do we need to do a motion on this? Or are we just, is this, Graciela, do we have to do a motion on this or we're just establishing this?
What we would be looking for is a motion on the process with any changes that you want to see made.
Okay.
I have a quick question. For like the external process, you're saying it's going to, it could be up to three to six weeks? For internal, what would that look like?
The same thing.
The same. So what I'm asking is, are the internal and the external together? The three to six, okay.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the process? Professor McKissin?
Yes, I've been listening carefully. And I want to echo what Aisha said. And I was pleased to hear what Catherine said about flexibility that the process for selection, the deliberation and so on and so forth is not yet set in any kind of stone, right? So what I'm hoping, the board has made a decision about interim. The board has decided to internal, external, longer period. I think this speaks to some of the concerns people have been raising. But I'm hoping I'm hearing that there's time to adjust the procedure to be more, to be collegial in a way that constituencies feel it's collegial, that that discussion takes place. It sounds to me like there's room to do that, and I think we should do it.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the process?
Yes, I think essentially we're revising that letter C at the bottom of page one, is what I'm hearing. And with the scope of duties, I see feedback from several constituency groups. We might want to add, you know, a student or make it clear that student representatives are also included in that scope of. Okay.
I think that's 5.3. The charter is 5.3, my understanding. So the guidelines are 5.2. The scope and of duties that you mentioned, that's 5.3 on the charter.
So I think, I think I'd like a motion that we do on 5.2, that we extend it to 30 days and we allow internal and external candidates at the same time.
I think you're all looking for a villain, so I'm going to be it. So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, student trustee, please?
Aye.
I have to take a roll call vote.
Roll call.
So my first, who's my second?
It was Jenny and Leslie. Excuse me, Trustee Beggs and Trustee Nicolau.
Thank you. Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Nicolau?
Aye.
And President Richards?
Yes.
And Vice President Aguilash?
Uh, since I said the 30 days, then I'm gonna say aye.
So, the vote is 6-0, uh, motion passes.
Okay, so 5.3, we just need, did we just kind of do that already? Oh, okay.
Yes, if we could amend 5.3 to include input from student representative, then I would mo, uh, move for approval.
I'll second it.
To hear, uh...
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton? You're muted. Trustee?
Thank you.
Trustee Nicolau?
Oh, Nicolau, aye. I'm sorry, aye.
Board President Richards?
Yes.
Vice President Aguilash?
Aye.
And trustee Beggs?
Aye.
The motion is, or the vote is 6 in favor, 0 opposed, motion carries.
Okay, that now moves us to 5.4, whether we want a search firm or not.
One more, one more thing, sorry. Now that the board has decided to pursue the interim recruitment and the board has voted in favor of establishing the committee, uh, we need the trustees to nominate three to serve on this committee. We...
I move that trustee Garrett, trustee Beggs and trustee Richards serve as our three trustee search committee.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
No, I think it's great.
Uh, just to give reasoning, I think that's a very well-versed group of very different personalities, very different thoughts and good experience with the district. As much as I'd love to be on it, um, I think that these three individuals and any of the trustees would do a good job, we're limited to three. Um, and so, my recommendation, my motion was trustee Garrett, trustee Beggs, trustee Richards.
Second. Come on, Les.
Oh, man.
Student trustee?
I, I just had a question, so, I don't know if this is like breaking the process or, but like, I just had a question. So, how does you, so we nominate three, right? That's like the chancellor, um, and then interim, yeah. Um, but from there, so, uh, the trustee Nicolau only get to choose? Or how does that work? Okay.
So, um, so we, we've outlined, and this has already been approved, who would be involved, which would include students and those, um, those groups that would provide feedback and input. What this motion is on the table is a search committee. Um, and those three essentially will help to oversee the process, work directly with human resources. Um, and then there'll be a proposed interim that will come to the full board for acceptance, if I understand that. You can help me out. Right, after we run the recruitment, the com, what I see is that the three board members serve as kind of the chairs of the committee and they will work with HR and we will work together to build an inclusive and transparent process by bringing in input from the constituency groups. And there's lots of steps to this recruitment that will be, um, be unfolding, like creating the job description and posting it on the website. And I won't bore you with all those details, but they will, or they are to follow.
Where did we come up with these three people?
Um, so Jenny, that was Jenny's motion.
Jenny's motion and it was seconded? So, we're about to vote now?
But I, I have a question. So, the people on this committee, because I did tell my husband I would slow down a little bit. Um, the people on this committee put, choose from the pool of candidates, a certain number to go to the full board.
Well, and all the constituent groups.
And the constituent groups, right? So, they're sort of like the initial filter? Okay.
Before we vote, I thought I remember maybe if, I don't know, Nancy kinda said she wanted to be involved, so.
I think so.
Would you put her in?
I do, yeah.
Nancy, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna substitute you for Leslie.
Because I can sub if she's not available.
They can amend it.
I amend the motion, uh, that...
Because of his, um, sometimes non, um, camaraderie with the, in the committees.
Nancy, we have a motion on the floor for Leslie, uh, trustee Garrett and myself. Are you, you indicate you'd like to be involved? Leslie's glad to say this. Antonio has, has tried to amend the motion to put you on, uh, in that place. Do you want to do that? Do you want to be on the committee?
I do.
Okay. Okay, so we, you did, we have a motion.
I amend the motion to, to...
Leslie can.
Garrett, that's basically the same, but getting, and if, if for some reason Nancy could, could not attend something, Leslie will stay, uh, will get in for her.
And that doesn't have to be voted on.
No, that's, yes, so that, that's my amended motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor? Please call the roll. Student has already...
I just want to make sure that I have the motion accurate so that the Board of Trustees approves the establishment of a temporary interim chancellor search committee consisting of three trustees, trustee Garrett, trustee...
Me.
Richards and...
And, and trustee Hinton.
So...
That was my amended...
That, that's what he amended.
So, with, with Leslie serving as an alternate?
Yes.
Yes.
And is that, well, okay.
Don't make it harder on me, I make enough mistakes.
Just in case Nancy has medical issues and she cannot attend, so.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, please call the roll.
I'm just trying to get it right so that when I do post it, that it is accurate. Thank you all for your patience.
Please call the roll.
If you could give me just one moment, I'm sorry.
Come on, let's go.
No, I don't, right now, I'm gonna, just finishing this, trustee.
Yes.
I'm the student trustee, is your vote?
No.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Trustee, Vice President, or President Richards?
Yes.
Vice President Aguilash. Trustee Beggs?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
The vote is 6 in favor, 0 opposed, motion carries.
Okay, now we move on to 5.4, whether we want a search firm or not. We, was that kind of covered or do we have to vote on it? It's kind of covered, okay.
We do not have a search firm.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, uh, thank you guys. Oh.
No action's been taken on search firm.
Okay, uh, is there a motion I want to do about a search firm?
I move that we send an RFP for a...
That we not have a search firm.
Hey, I was ahead of you, Nancy. See if I can get a second, and if I don't, then you're up. Move for a search firm.
Is there a second?
So, is this still part of 5.3?
Four.
So, this is, oh, for the interim.
Hey, Nancy, you can make your motion now, seeing as we don't have a second.
I make a motion that we do not have a search firm.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Student trustee?
Aye.
Please call the roll.
So, would not use an executive search firm, is this for permanent or interim or both?
No, just for this.
Current search.
This recording.
Well, I guess Nancy, I, I understood it was just for this.
Yeah, for this, yeah, that's what it is.
Just for this.
This search now.
Don't make it difficult, Graciela.
No, I'm looking at the motion and so it says, um, take public comments. I presume no public comments or...
Public comments.
Okay, anyone want to comment on whether we have a search firm or not?
I think we already did.
Yeah, I thought we did, okay. Please take the roll.
Can't see it, I'm sorry.
Aisha Saleh, if you can unmute yourself.
Yeah, sorry, I had my hand up previously, so I'm not sure how much it, it relates to this, but I am curious because I know, um, whoever ends up running the process will kind of guide everyone through implementing what's being voted on today. Um, but I, I just wanted to clarify because I, I'm hearing bring in input from constituent groups. And I guess I, it's, I guess I'm just wanting very direct language so I have a clear understanding of exactly what the process is going to look like. Um, I, I understand the three trustees who were voted to serve on the search committee, but am I understanding correctly that unlike in the past, there won't be any other actual constituent representatives on the search committee itself? Am I understanding correctly?
I believe what the, what the process for interim will be, will be that all the constituency groups will be brought in as, in this process to review the job description, provide feedback and feedback and on the candidates. So, it won't be as traditional as when we go to the permanent search.
Okay, so there, there won't be any representation then on the search committee? Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor about the not using a search firm?
Trustee Nicolau? President Richards?
Yes.
Vice President Aguilash?
Aye.
President, or trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
No.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Vote is five in favor, when opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, okay. Moving on to, uh, board committee reports. Uh, there won't be a finance committee report.
Isn't there a presentation?
Uh, no, no.
Oh, I see, I'm out of, I skipped a page, sorry.
That's it. Does Nancy have anything to say? Nancy, do you have anything about your committee?
No, I wasn't able to make it.
Okay, Leslie, foundation?
Uh, nothing on the foundation right now. Um, the Christmas party is coming up at, at, I think the date's been changed, so check your calendars, I think it's Thursday at the, like, December 12th, I think, for the annual bash that they do. Yeah. Thank you.
Anything on the Columbia Foundation?
Out on the Columbia Foundation.
How about your other job?
Yes, on the Association of Stand Up Slos County School Boards. It's a brief report. The, uh, county office of education is providing a workshop for all new school board, uh, members who were newly, newly elected. So, if you're in a K-12 district or if we would have had one elected here at the, at the community college district, their workshop would be for them. February 25th to the county office at 3:30 to 6:30. Also, they ask that you save the date, if you haven't already, for April 30th, for the annual, um, Stanislaus County School Boards, uh, dinner. That's it.
Thank you. Now you get to present, Curtis. I, I know you've been waiting for a long time. And your group. Very good. Thank you for being here tonight and thank you for waiting.
Thank you, good evening, thank you for this space. Um, I'm Glenn Stovall, the director of the Rise Up Center and tonight we're basically, that is comprised of a number of programs, but tonight we're gonna highlight Rising Scholars, which is a program that is designated for reaching out to students that are, uh, justice impacted, formerly incarcerated. They've expanded the role where initially started in 2017 with, for only formerly incarcerated. Then it gravitated also to anyone that has been justed in, justice impacted, which means sometimes someone is arrested in the home and whether they went to jail or not, they have been impacted by the system. And so, that's where we started in 2017. To give you a little context, when we did start there, it started by us making presentations in the West Campus Juvenile Center and the React Center. And so, once we started there, we started with Dr. Redwing, um, and then we went out there and presented the opportunities for them to start taking online courses. When they heard about that, it went into Salvation Ankle Monitoring Program, the Drug Monitoring Program, um, throughout the county where they would call us and then they would bring, they would drive the students to our, um, campus and we would do an orientation with this particular student one at a time. Then COVID hit and then that changed. So, we immediately went to online courses and from there, we have moved from the West Campus Juvenile System. We now are in the React System, um, Center on Hackett Road and then the CHCF, which is a California healthcare facility in Stockton. So, we now have, um, 100 students that are incarcerated that are now taking MJC courses. Started with Jerry Sawicki our first year and then we have three, um, of our faculty that are, uh, most of them are here with us, um, tonight. Um, Mr. Christopher Mickles, who teaches history. Um, Ms. Melanie Baroud, sociology. And, oh, and once again, Ms. Jerry Sawicki. And I think that is all, this spring semester will have five and so will be well over 150, 200 students, um, that will be receiving MJC courses. So, it's growing significantly. Um, I think it's important to understand that in reaching out to this population, um, it's not the normal laptops, textbooks that really makes a difference, but the program was set up behind the Vision for Success and the Vision 2030 goals, which means that we are supposed to, we're mandated to increase academic acceleration in graduating and transferring persistence and retention and increasing the number of units that they need to graduate. So, that's what it's been based on. And because of that, we've had tremendous, tremendous amount of success in them working hard, coming into the system and then leaving our campus. Um, we are also mandated to hire at least, uh, at least one student that is, um, an RSN student, but we usually, half of our student worker staff is usually RSN. Um, and it's made an impact on their life and they, they leave their, like, Monica, she's graduating, um, her bachelor's degree and she's already calling me for letters to go into the master's program. Jasmine was one of our other ones who's also on her way to completing her bachelor's degree and now going for a master's. Uh, Mr. David Luhan is one of our students also that, um, we hired and he, uh, did amazing here at MJC and then he graduated, uh, UC Merced.
He was here before, right?
Yes, he was.
In the last presentation, I remember. Congratulations.
Yes, and he's on his way, um, to the master's program also. So, what it does, the impact is that being surrounded by a network of students and staff that give them guidance allows them to exceed their goals of, many times they just wanted a certificate, but once they found that they had the resources and the guidance, then they went beyond and succeeded and exceeded their expectations. And so, tonight, uh, we just wanted to go into a little bit twofold to give you an opportunity to hear one of our students again and then third, to let you see from our faculty's perspective of going into the prisons and the different facilities. and seeing how we are impacting the students that we're reaching out to. So once again, like, two and a half years ago, we brought David Luhon in. It's been an amazing, had an amazing impact on our students as our peer mentor, where he has demonstrated academic success and showed our students how they could also mirror that. So just for just a few minutes, I'm going to have David come up and then just share how the RSN program impacts the students.
Good evening, Board, and thank you for this opportunity once again. So I started out, I think it was in 2018, I became a student here, and initially I thought I wanted to become a drug and alcohol counselor, and so I obtained my AA degree, and a funny thing happened, like, you know, I encountered some amazing faculty members that, you know, that just reminded me that I could continue my education even further, right? A lot of times, you know, as returning students, students that have been formerly incarcerated, oftentimes, we don't know our own capacity, right? And so I ended up transferring. The entire time that I was at MJC, I worked with Glenn Stovall with the Rising Scholars, and initially, there wasn't that many of us, but now we probably have, I think it's 130 students on campus. So it's grown tremendously, and the program itself provided me an opportunity to just get grounded, right? And I think that you hear that a lot, right? You just oftentimes, especially as an adult learner, right? Oftentimes, you need a space where you can just grow, right? Anchor yourself, and I think that's what this particular program afforded me. And so by my second and third semester, I was working as a peer mentor. And what often happens is that, you know, as folks get grounded, that are system impacted, as they get grounded, they reach back, and they're really good at just helping folks out, you know, pulling them along as well. And so many of our students gravitate towards behavioral health and science, and initially, they don't really have the language for what it is that they want to do, they just know that they have this deep desire to want to get back to their community. And so many of our students are counselors today out in the community. And I point that out only because this is not unique to Modesto Junior College, across the board. More often than not, folks that have been system impacted have a deep desire to want to get back to their community. And so I'm just appreciative of the opportunities, not only for our students that are on campus, but also for students that are in institutions as well. We know that a post-secondary education significantly reduces recidivism. Recidivism right now covers about 72%. So 72% of folks that are coming home will return within three years. But an amazing thing happens, if you get an AA degree, it goes down to somewhere in the 20s, right? Like, why wouldn't we invest in more of those opportunities, right? I mean, it costs $4,000 to give someone an education for one year to community college as opposed to $100,000. And $100,000, you know, I can find you someone, you're not going to get much return on the dollar. And so I just, I'm appreciative, the students are appreciative that are at the institutions. They share that with us, you know, just to be given this opportunity. And post-secondary education really transforms lives, and it's such an organic, and I think in a way that differs from everything else out in the community. And I think it happens because folks learn critical thinking skills, and I think they learn that there's alternatives to some of the choices they have, and that certainly has happened for me. And so again, I want to be mindful of the Board's time, and just, I just encourage, you know, the Board to just continue to expand these programs, and I really believe that MJC can be a leader, not only in Northern California. And I also think that we can, at the end of the day, I think we can not only change, transform lives, but I think we can transform communities. And at the end of the day, I think that's what we all want, and so, thank you for your time.
So that's what we're about, and it's, as Ms. Baroud comes up, one of the things as we've gone into the facilities, they don't just take classes just like here at MJC, but they succeed. They have a 90% completion rate in the prisons that we're teaching at, and not majority of Ds and Cs, majorities of As and then some Bs, and then of course, some Cs. So they're doing amazingly well, and they do the same thing here at MJC. So a lot of times, people think otherwise, but we've seen the grit and the determination that is needed to be successful here. So at this time, we're just going to have Ms. Baroud go through faculty perspective of what's going on in our facilities, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I get the honor and privilege to talk about, a little bit about my experience teaching behind the walls. An elder once asked, you know, who do you represent when you walk into spaces? And tonight, I'm representing my students that can't be here, that are currently at the React jail facility. But I like to quote Bell Hooks, "The classroom remains the most radical space of possibility in the academy." Radical meaning getting to the root of things. So I have the honor to be able to teach sociology in the jail, and when you teach sociology, the systematic study of society and social groups and social interactions, they start connecting dots. They start connecting why many, the push and pull factors of life on how they got to where they got and where they need to go. I want to quote one of my students who is currently incarcerated. "Some people have misconceptions about people who have been or are incarcerated, like only being hardened criminals or drug addicts without hopes and dreams or real aspirations. But on the contrary, some of the most innovative, artistic, ingenious, poetic, and musically inclined men and women have found themselves in here." That's one of my rising scholars. Another one says, "We are choosing to use our time rather than allowing our time to use us." And that was his why on why he was taking the college course with me. Some of the teaching highlights that I have, I really get the honor to be able to share space with such amazing, hungry students, just absolutely hungry and grateful for us to even show up. They, they're, and some of the highlights are empowering students through the curriculum, where you're seeing in real time them drawing connections and having lasting impressions. And I was teaching, one particular time, I'm teaching a particular theory, and after I'm explaining it, it was almost like you can hear a pen drop, and then one goes, "Oh, my gosh, that's how I got in here." Profound! And then it's like, okay, how else can you use theory to get out of here? And how else can you use theory to stay out of here, right? And then you see them come to life and brainstorm, and also take their own agency, right? So understanding the push and pull factors, but also understanding one's accountability as well. The joy to be able to foster critical thinking skills in a safe, brave space, to be able to challenge them, to be able to encourage them. And then also for me, it was personal and professional development. When I, when I, my first semester, when I taught at React, I realized that I had to, I had to learn to pivot. I learned how to learn how to, I was in a total institution where they tell you what, when, where, and how. And realized, I remember they were trying to open, someone was trying to open the door, and we're locked in with our students, and immediately I wanted to help someone open the door, and then my student says, "No, no, no, you're in jail too." And I was like, "Ah, yes, yes, I can't open any doors." But I had to learn that what happens when the internet goes out, what happens when different things happen. So it actually challenged me, I would say that it's making me a better instructor, because I'm like, okay, how, I have to have Plan A, B, and C, right? So it sharpens me up that I really, and I really appreciate, I really appreciate that. And also to be able to have the joy of teaching and learning from them. There's an aspect of reciprocity when I'm in the classroom, it's not just going in one direction. They're teaching me all the time, and I'm just like, oh, my goodness. They're also teaching me about aspects of where I'm living a privileged life, and they will caringly let me know about their perspective, and I'm like, ooh, I didn't think about that. And again, it has improved my own development. And also seeing the relationship building and bridging gaps. Now, in that space, I remember there was a particular situation where one of my students, he said, it was his last day, and he was going to release sooner before the class ended. And so he's saying his goodbye, and he's saying his thank yous, and as he's about to say, as he's saying, "Thank you," his voice cracks, and he's trying not to cry, and he puts his head down and he says, "I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm trying to hold it together." And everyone in that space, this was the men's unit, everyone in that space was like, "It's okay, it's okay, go ahead and cry, go ahead and cry. Keep in mind, these are folks that are incarcerated, and also think about gender socialization, right? Men, right? And so you have in that space where you're seeing the community build together and support each other. Cry, let it out, let it out." And what he said, what he said was, he goes, "Before this class, I, before this class, out there, I'm a jailbird, but in here, I'm a scholar." That's right. So every time they would come to the space, "How are you doing, Rising Scholars?" On the Board, "Welcome, Rising Scholars," right? To, again, so they can internalize that, that they are scholars in that space, and I treat them as such. The opportunity to address misconceptions about system impacted students. Again, the data shows that, they perform at a higher level than our general population. I had so many, this, we had accelerated class, and it ended, and I had majority A pluses. Then there's this like healthy competition that goes on, and it's like, wait, how many people had extra credit this week? And then all of a sudden, they're competing against each other, and I was like, okay, I lost count. I mean, 104%, 102%, hungry, and not just hungry because they say they're hungry, hungry because of their behaviors that show up. And then we also have supportive services that come in, and they get to know other MJC staff and faculty, so there's that warm handoff. They don't, they just don't know me, they just don't know Mr. Stovall or David, but it's other people, so they're meeting more and more MJC staff. And so I have a quote from one of the staff that went in. "Speaking to the React students was a highlight in my semester. Although the learning environment was restricted and more challenging, the level of desire from the students outshined the cement walls and the remote screens. I was there to help inspire the React students, see what education could do for them, but being there, I also gained something. During that session, they helped inspire me. I feel that this opportunity could be the shift to a new path for many of them that have been, that could be life-changing to a better future. Education can save lives, and these are the students that should be exposed to it most." And that's from, that's from a colleague, Letizia Blanco. And I just want to say that, I'll leave you with a couple of things that some students have said. One student says, "I am finding my freedom in here." Think about the profundity of that statement. They're locked up. "I am finding my freedom in here." Right, that's the power of education. And then one student, when he said that, he says, "I'm finding my freedom in here." He goes, "I can't wait to tell other people to free others." And then also, when we were talking about the sociology of love, and they love that subject, they absolutely love that subject, outside of, you know, the general population does too. But one person, when we talk about sociology of love, we also talk about loving oneself, right? And the social construction of love, and it's so powerful when they're saying like, "I'm worthy. I matter." For system impacted folks, that's profound, because society and the world has told them that they don't. And all of a sudden, they're finding their worth in that space. And then also, they've also said, "Thank you, because in here, I found I have a purpose." That's all I got, thank you.
The Rise Up, the Rise Up Center stands for Raising Intellectual Student Effort, and that's what happens, as Ms. Baroud just said. One of the things that really struck me is, many of them would come into our office, and they would just stick their head in the door and say, "Hey, I just want to say hi." Because as she was saying, they were no longer invisible. They had a place that they felt safe, they had a place where they were guided to meet their goals, not the goals that we set for them, but for their academic and life goals. And with the team that we've had, Dean Rocha has allowed us the autonomy and the latitude to do whatever we need to meet the needs of those students. So we just wanted to make sure you knew of those efforts and the success of the students in the RSN program. We thank you for this time.
Comments, questions, anybody? You guys are doing great things, Leslie?
It's not really a question, although actually I did have one, come to think of it. Like, what percentage of these students are behind bars, and what percentage are out on probation? Or you mentioned ankle monitoring and things like that.
Okay, so the 110 that I mentioned, those are all behind bars. And that'll go up in the spring, because we have five classes slated for the CHCF, plus we'll have two classes in the React Center, so that's going to go up significantly. On our campus, I could not tell you the ones that are on ankle monitors now, they usually show them to me, but they haven't been doing that lately. So on our campus, we have about 120 RSN students, and then there's like 110, 120 that are incarcerated.
Okay, I was just going to say, so a long, long time ago, when I was at Clemson, I was taking a psychology and the law class.
And you were in prison?
I was, we spent a day at the Atlanta Federal Prison, and it was fascinating. And one of the, you know, we saw the most hardened, but we saw a special group that was set aside that had more freedom, and one of the things they were doing was getting education, and they were, they were not a threat to each other. And it was wonderful, and ever since then, I've been so interested in this as a topic and in recidivism rates, et cetera, so I love what you're doing. I also spent a year on the Civil Grand Jury in Stanislaus County, and as part of that, we were given the opportunity to tour every prison in the area. And that was very depressing in some cases, a lot of cases, but knowing that we have this program now and that so many of these inmates can have a meaningful life outside and have purpose is just fabulous, and I love what you're doing, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a comment?
Please.
Can I just say thank you to Professor of Sociology Melanie Baroud and Rising Scholar Network Peer Mentor David Luna? I think this was an amazing presentation, I've had the privilege and honor to be in Melanie Baroud's, Professor Melanie Baroud's class. I took that class, as I mentioned, my first semester as an MJC student. But I just want to say this, like, you know, the work that you guys are doing is really great, and one thing that I hope that you guys mention is the RSN Symposium. I'll be volunteering there tomorrow.
Let me please mention that.
Please, please.
I was just focused on this. Devin and I were sitting around last year, and we were trying to come up with some things that we could do that is different. So this, tomorrow, November 14th, in the MSR Building from 10 to 3, we will have our first inaugural RSN Symposium. And so we have already signed up like 140 that are coming from all over Northern California students, from different correctional facilities, different colleges, that'll be bringing in their students, and that'll be happening tomorrow. What we will be doing is highlighting the success of those students, new methods, and, you know, sharing information that will move us forward. Because the very, most important thing is, we have an RSN program, which is for classes, but our students need help outside the classes. Vision 2030 is about employment, and hopefully, you know, our institution will be able to continue to allow opportunities where we can hire these students because they are worthy of it. They've done what they needed to do to get to that point, and now we have to have a certain degree of reciprocity in providing options for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to associate reports. Professor McKissick, you get to be first tonight.
May I respectfully request to save my remarks until after the association presidents?
Sure. Let's move on to the Academic Activity Reports, Marcus Wissenhut. He still didn't bring us any baked goods, I'm waiting for that.
A little busy.
Okay.
Good evening, Chancellor Young and trustees. On October 18th, the Columbia College Academic Senate as a whole voted in favor of Resolution FA 24C, a vote of no confidence in regard to the Columbia College President's leadership. The second reading will take place on November 15th. The Academic Senate does not take this resolution lightly, and would like to reiterate that the language of the resolution reflects the concerns of the majority of the Columbia College Academic Senate. College Academic Senate. The Senate has weighed many options with collegial, robust debate and a, a lot of tough conversations, and this is where we've landed. In regards to the chancellor search, Columbia College Academic Senate requests that this board conducts the search with transparency. I understand that some decisions have been made today. I wrote this before all of that. But there are valid concerns that an individual has already been groomed to step into this position with no hiring processes taking place. In closing, I'd like to, I'd like to personally thank MJC's Academic Senate President Gisele Flores and her executive team for the open communication, collaboration and mutual respect that both senates have with each other. It has been a pleasure working with the Senate down the hill and I hope they feel the same way as well. This concludes my report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Modesto Junior College Academic Senate President, President Flores?
I said most of my remarks in during action items, but the feeling is mutual, Marcus. I really appreciate the collaboration that our senates have. I'll make this part of my report really brief. I just, I know they left, but I just wanted to shout out Chris Mickles and Melanie Baru. Chris is actually our part-time senator on our senate and is incredible. He's really good at making sure part-timers are informed about what's happening in our senate. And he does really great work with the Rising Scholars Program. And Melanie is a rock star. I don't know if you noticed, but she's just so captivating and, um, we're really fortunate to have both of them as part of our faculty body. So, um, I also just wanted to give a shout out, oh, Tina is still here, to our curriculum co-chair, Tina Akers Porter, uh, who advocated for our students by writing three resolutions at our Academic Senate plenary that we just returned from, which, uh, really put focus on the, uh, the contradicting information from the chancellor's office memo in regards to 1705 implementation. Um, and all three were passed and adopted by the state academic senate. So I just want to thank her for her advocacy. And that's it. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Leadership, Leadership Team Advisory Council, Dean Mackey?
Good evening, Board and Chancellor Young. I want to reiterate Gisele's feeling about the Rising Scholars presentation. That was a great presentation, really good to hear. The leadership team is, or the LTAC is continuing to work with HR and support the leadership professional development that's going on. So we're continuing with that. We want to reiterate our concerns with the payroll process where managers are encouraged to approve time prior to working hours and we're hopeful we can come up with a workable plan for that. LTAC looks forward to participating in the district-wide third college town hall. And if plans move forward, LTAC would like to encourage the district to have a well-thought-out plan that includes infrastructure and staffing to support an additional college if we move that direction. We are starting nomination process for the advisory council. So there are several representatives whose terms are up, so we've started that nomination process. We sent out a survey to the leadership team for items needed reviewed in the handbook. And so we will continue to work with HR on those revisions. And finally, LTAC is working with the MJ, with the foundations, MJC and Columbia Foundations to continue to use a large portion of the money collected by LTAC dudes to go to student scholarships. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Very much. Now we'll move on to the Student Senate Activity Report.
Is this one on? Cool. Um, the ASCC has had another great month of events and student engagement. Uh, we have 14 clubs chartered so far this semester, which is the most we've had since COVID. Um, we had a wildly successful Halloween Spirit Week event that had tons of student engagement. The Student Center Stocked Kitchen and the ASCC sponsored food pantry is continuing to feed hungry students and is a great resource for students. We will be supporting an upcoming Cram Night event that we do every semester and we will soon begin planning for holiday events like our Giving Tree event. But lastly, the ASCC would like to convey their disappointment in the board's decision to not hire an outside agency to conduct a nationwide search. This position is vital to everyone on both campuses and as stated earlier, we deserve the best and it concerns us that without a nationwide search, we will not receive the best. It is also disappointing that a representative of Columbia College has not been included on the chancellor search committee. Thank you.
Associate students, Modesto Junior College, Joanne Romero. Is your president also here or just, just you? Okay, thank you.
So good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Young. Um, in the month of October, ASMJC has had a pretty fulfilling and busy month. Um, the first, at the beginning of the month, some of our ASMJC members attended a conference down in LA, our Seesaw Conference. It was a great trip and, you know, very educational. Uh, the members who were not able to attend the Seesaw Conference stayed here at home and they volunteered for our 41st Annual Hispanic Education Conference. And then on October 29th, our ASMJC Senator Ashley Hernandez held a presidential mock debate in our west campus, I don't know, sorry, on our east campus. It was a non-partisan debate between two candidates. Um, and the, and the two candidates were Celeste Randolph and Shane Barlos. They debated on many political questions from, I'm sorry, from world, federal, state and local issues. And the debate had a goal to inform others of political issues and to vote for the 2024 elections. Happened recently. And then about two weeks ago, we did send out our transportation survey. We had the survey made, so we were planning on sending this, this survey before the whole bust out situation, but we still decided to go through with it. And we are currently working on a statement with the, with the, with the results. And then we did spend the last two weeks of, of the month of October, working on our 30th Annual Spooky Night. It was on our west campus on October 31st. It was a great event. We got a great feedback in regards to our little booths and tables and our haunted house that we had. And then upcoming for, um, upcoming events, tomorrow, ASMJC is going to volunteer at the RSN, uh, Senam, CM, I'm so sorry, I forgot the name. And we also have Cram Night coming up on December, December 5th and 6th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. YFA President Brian Green.
Good evening, trustees, President Richards and Chancellor Young. I'd like to start off my report this evening by congratulating trustees Aguilar, Beggs, Garrett and Richards for their reelection to another term. I appreciate your commitment to YCCD and the students we serve and look forward to working with you in the coming year. I'm a little unclear about what the interim chancellor search process will look like. We run interim searches regularly and in my experience constituent groups are fully involved. It sounds like that they're going to have less of a role this time and I think that's unfortunate. On a more positive note, and as mentioned at the October board meeting, HR has confirmed that it will be conducting exit interviews, uh, with employees separating from the district as part of the offboarding process. I hope this will provide useful information for why some employees are leaving the district prior to retirement. Thank you to the district for being responsive to that request from a number of constituency groups. Columbia has faced a string of power outages recently that have resulted in canceled classes and disrupted operations across the campus. While we have regularly had outages the entire time I've worked at Columbia, there does seem to be like an uptick recently for some reason. Um, I understand Columbia's College Services Committee is discussing ways to install backup power to more buildings, uh, with the goal of reducing the impact of outages. I encourage the district and the board to keep an eye out for recommendations to improve Columbia's resiliency in terms of maintaining consistent power on campus. At the same time, present trans office and security personnel are working to update our procedures for outages to minimize confusion. In the end, I hope we can make the infrastructure and procedural improvements necessary to minimize disruption caused by the outages. Alas, we still do not have a published contract to distribute. YFA has been validating some of the updated course capacity numbers and are confirming backup with the district in the colleges in some instances. The district is finalizing an MOU that captures the numerous corrections that we made subsequent to the negotiations concluding, um, and that we made over the summer. Um, and I strongly hope that we're able to publish in the next couple of weeks. Need to get this thing out there. A lot of people rely on it. At the table, negotiations have been going a little slower than expected. YFA is working on a counterproposal to the district's conceptual plan to move away from a points-based system for part-time rehire rights. We also have a subgroup working on streamlining the existing evaluation process and forms. And I expect more substantive proposed changes, uh, to the evaluation process to be forthcoming soon. This concludes my report. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you. California School and Players Association, on duty, Patrick Krebs.
Good evening, President Richards, Chancellor Young and fellow trustees. As I had said before, I'm on duty and in uniform. CSC Chapter 420 has concluded its nomination process. I would like to introduce President-elect Sabino Salas to please come up here. Oh, come on, come on. Vice President Rita Perez will remain vice president in this coming year. Aaron Colby, who is our current treasurer, come on, will become our second VP. Quincy Vildery, who is not here, will become our secretary. Treasurer Tracy Gilman, uh, who is also not here. And we have two positions, communications officers, as well as our chief job union steward are up for election. CSC would like to offer congratulations to those trustees that have won another term in office. CSC would like to remind trustees that besides the students, CSCA is the largest constituency group at YCCD and we do vote and we are paying attention. I had a lot more, but that was touched on earlier, so I will conclude my report.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Professor McKissick.
Thank you for this opportunity to address you and congratulations to our trustees that have been reelected. I, I was asked to convey concerns about the chancellor search and selection process. I think everything I had to say has been covered, but I'm going to echo what I heard Brian say, um, and what I heard a couple of other association leaders say. The, the nature of the participation by constituencies has not yet been determined, I'm understanding, right? I heard Catherine say, uh, some general things about that and that I'm encouraged by the fact that it is not yet determined. That leaves room for discussion and something that is most satisfactory under the circumstances to the people involved, the constituencies. I'm sure it won't just be a memo sent out, this is how you shall participate, right? I'm, I'm, I'm sure there will be more discussion of that, uh, than just, just the memo, right? So having said that, um, I want to offer personal commendations to our chancellor for facilitating discussion in the Policies and Procedures Committee by arranging for legal counsel to be present for discussions around the complex of board policies and administrative procedures, which relate to due process issues. I also want to especially thank Attorney Travis Lindsey for his direct, concise and clear explanation of various legal issues that were important in discussion. As a teacher, I admire that. The YFA and Columbia College Academic Senate's wanted clear delineation between policy and procedure changes that are required to stay within compliance of the law and other issues that were really about trying to achieve best practice where a more robust discussion may be in order. I believe he did that very well in a way that inspired confidence in his advice. There's been plenty to disagree about in PNP, but it's been civil, respectful and constructive. Speaking for myself, I attribute that in part to Kimberly Gibbs' skill as a discussion leader. In keeping with my prior remarks, and this was written before our, uh, robust discussions this evening, I don't believe we should ever take civility, like I referenced for PNP, for granted. It does not happen by itself. I looked up board policy, uh, on civility and I remember when board members put special effort into crafting that. I was there for some of the discussion. It states, "Members of the Yosemite Community College District embrace the value of civility. Civility refers to the content and style with which verbal, written and other types of communication occur in a professional interactions proceedings. In a civil context, all members of the community are heard, valued, taken seriously, treated with dignity and respect and treated without prejudice. Importantly, civility, especially in academic context, encompasses vigorous, reasoned disagreement and critique of ideas. Civility underpins the ability to agree to disagree on contentious issues and is a necessary precondition for collegial interchanges that are free and unfettered. Civil civility enables the diversity of thought and ideas fundamental to an academic institution." And I hope it helps inform the way we decide to choose a chancellor, of course. The country has a president-elect with an ambitious agenda of some fundamental changes. Agree or disagree, like it or not, major controversies are coming. I believe it unrealistic to assume those controversies will not manifest in our board council and committee deliberations. In the past and in the present, changes in, at the federal level have certainly done that. So I'll finish with a few sentences from President Biden's recent remarks that I think are appropriate. I have said many times, you can't love your country only when you win. You can't love your neighbor only when you agree. Sometimes I hope we can do, no matter who, something I hope we can do, no matter who you voted for, is see each other not as adversaries, but as fellow Americans, bring down the temperature. You might think the metaphor a bit melodramatic, uh, for governance and our small patch of the country, the YCCD community, uh, but I must respectfully and civilly disagree. Thank you very much.
Chancellor Young? Thank you. I'd like to begin by calling Dr. Trent to give us the report from Columbia College. Dr. Trent?
Thank you, Chancellor Young. Good evening, Board, trustees, community members, colleagues. Tonight, I have some exciting news to share and hopefully Gracella can bring it on the screen. But recently, we were honored by the Union Democrat for being the best college and it is 2024 is the Reader Choice Award. It is voted by 94,000 individuals across the seven counties in our area. This is a tremendous, I repeat, it is an honor for our college to be recognized in this capacity. And as my report, it will show you why Columbia College is the best college. And some of those updates, starting with first, our enrollment. Our enrollment is very healthy and the reason why it's healthy is I'm looking at my faculty here, our faculty, our staff, but it's really the faculty in the classroom that makes a difference in our students. And then out of the classroom is the support staff. So the word takes an effort of a whole entity and institution. And that's why our enrollment is growing, is past the pandemic and we are, again, I share, you know, moving lips and bounds. In addition to that, we know there's a lot of mandates from this day and I'd like to do a shout out, a huge shout out to our curriculum committee who worked like hard. They, they slayed, they did all the work they need so that we can meet the mandate for AB 1111, which is the common course numbering. So that is something we want to recognize our team for their effort. And, um, I was going to share our student left, but I had the opportunity to have lunch with our student and their, their story really touched me. Their everyday live worry, they still worry about, well, is there a food pantry? Is there enough? Could you please write on the board, when do we have food pantry so that we won't forget? And immediately we do that. And they're very conscious about the environment. Can we do something about the greenhouse? What can we do? So I really enjoy having lunch with the president and continue to do that and realize that, you know, we have a duty to serve our students and to make sure that they are well taken care educationally, but also mentally that they're stable to carry on their academic goals. Um, we also have a transfer fair happening this week and CSU's Dennis Law say, you know what? We like Columbia. We want to offer class on your campus so we can understand that the transportation might not be an option for all students. So we want to bring our courses to you on campus and we hear that. So my administration team is actually going to meet and say, what does that look like for our student? Some fun stuff coming up, uh, looking at our faculty, Marcus here, our culinary program. Again, we're going to have a holiday luncheon that is cater and that is a, a class for our culinary student, for our dessert, bakery, food. So we hope that you can join us on that aspect. So we hope that you can join us on that aspect. And I really resonate with Brian Green on the effort of our college. You're right, we're working on it. So we're actually looking at all the, you know, backup generators, and we're really taking a look and saying, which building needs the most, right? So we're looking at childcare, we're looking at all the area where student congregates. We're moving that, and actually tomorrow, we have a leadership team to look at all the closure procedure. But further, we, you know, touch base with Lucas from IT because now we have the residence hall, which our students need internet. So to say the least, there's a lot of things going on at Columbia College, but at the same time, there's a lot of great project, great things happening at the college. And because of those things, in the last, you know, 40 years, we finally, 50 years, we finally got recognized as best college. And I will leave my report with that, so thank you for your support. And we love you to come and visit Columbia College, it's a beautiful campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sanders, MJC report.
All right, I've been scratching as much as I can for my report, trying to keep this brief. Couple of highlights for us, good evening. I wanted to commend our students who left for their spooky night for this Halloween event that they put together. Our team of students is the most engaged and involved and committed that I've ever seen. It's truly fantastic. On Friday, November 1st, a group of us from Modesto Junior College, including trustee Nicolau, trustee Aguilar, some administrators, four faculty members, went to Hartnell College in Salinas to observe and learn about their joint agriculture and industrial technology training facility. We think it's going to be a fantastic model for Modesto Junior College to follow in working that into our facility's master plan. We were especially impressed by the really large donor wall and how they engaged with all of the agricultural community leaders in that area. This last Saturday, the School of Agriculture hosted the Harvest Party in the Pavilion. Trustee Beggs was there for the first part and then had grandma duties, was it? So she had another party to go to, she had another event. But she was there and we had a great time together, good food, good drink was all provided for everyone, and a live band and dancing and all sorts of fun things. So wear your boots next time and join us for the egg harvest party. I want to commend our deans at Modesto Junior College. They've been working very hard in refining our schedule, tightening things up post-COVID, improving our average class size across the institution, ensuring that the courses that we offer meet the needs of our students and help them progress through, while at the same time improving the efficiencies that we have at the institution. At this point, we're on track to meet the half percent growth that's available within the state. We're looking like we're going to be able to get all of that growth money, possibly some more. I don't want to overpromise on that. It has been really challenging. Through the negotiations process, the faculty part-time salaries increased significantly, and we really value the supporting of our faculty with that raise, but it has made it very difficult on the budget side for us to be able to make things end to meet. Today, we received and reviewed the ACCJC team report from the commission. They'll be reviewing that at their full meeting in January. Vice President Benton Court, our former faculty co-chair, who's now on the agenda, hopefully to be approved by you as the dean of instruction, Mike Smith Hammer, and I will be going to the commission meeting in January in Sacramento to address them directly. And lastly, I'll conclude my report with goats. We have this really unique partnership that just got started this year, where the Regional Fire Training Center had a bunch of weeds, and the sheriff's department has a bunch of goats that they deploy to the Regional Fire Training Center to eat the weeds, to take down the fire danger at the fire training center. So MJC, county sheriff, and Fire Training Center working together, and goats are involved.
Thank you, Dr. Sanders. I wanted to share with the board and the audience that I attended the transfer conference at UC Maset. And UC Maset hosted the conference, which pulled together the three systems of higher education in California. Basically, the UC system, the Cal State system, and the Community College system. The three CEOs of each of those systems were there. A lot of great discussion, very well attended. There were close to 200 people in attendance and probably another 156 or 57 people on Zoom. And it was a robust discussion on what each system could do to increase transfer and especially into the STEM disciplines. So next, I'm going to call on Vice Chancellor Trevor Stewart to share with us the safety report, campus safety report.
Great, thank you. So attached to the agenda is the annual safety report. This report is required and due every October 1st. Without going through the 60-something page report, what drives the requirement for this report is the Clery Act. And on page seven, there's a good description and definition of what this report is. And as you go through the report, you get back into the data. Each and every day, as our campus safety officers are doing their role, they are providing their reports based on the activities that are happening. So if there is a theft on campus, then they're marking that. And the culmination of that information is then included in the back. And what you'll see, and I'm going to find the page number where that starts on, starting on page 40 and going through the end of the report, we are doing reporting for Columbia, MJC East and MJC West. And you will see that we end up having a very safe district. We have three very safe campuses with very little crime. And so we hope that that continues, and we want to thank campus safety for all the work that they do.
Is it up or down from last year?
I think it's down. When you look at the zeros, there's a one and a two, but they're in the 2021s, not in the 2023s.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Otherwise, that's it.
Thank you. I'd like to conclude by acknowledging the spotlight on faculty by the English Language Department, where faculty were highlighted for the work that they do. And it was a great event. I saw a lot of students who attended. Definitely, it was an opportunity to share with all of us a little bit about the great work that they do in that department. That concludes my report. Thank you.
7.4, 7.5, and 7.6 are informational only. Moving on to the consent items, Madam Sonographer, I think you have some changes or some corrections?
Yes, and if I may, I'm just going to share my screen just so that the public's view. On 7.9, the personnel transaction items, section one of that, there were some corrections. One, to the appointment academic one for Susana Flores, the period is spring 2025 and fall 2025 only. For Brandon Gilbert, you see that he is an academic appointment tenure track. So the change also is to the effective date, it's for spring 2025. So that's, those are the corrections for-
Oh, we're on that chart. Trustee Davis, would you like to talk about the retirees since trustee Garrett is not here?
All right, I was going to wait till after the vote, but this would be a great time since we see the names. You just, I don't know if any of these folks are here this evening, but there are some members of our team that are retiring, and we always want to recognize those folks. I will start with Tanya Smith. After 17 years of service as the program specialist in our Student Services Department, thank you for your service. Also Gregory Hausmann, 24 years of service, the professor of administration of justice in the School of Behavioral and Social Sciences. We see that Thomas Johnson is also retiring, 27 years of service as a professor of history. Thank you for your service. Catherine Villafana, 28 years of service as an accounting analyst in the Business Services Department. Thank you. Eric Ivory, 28 years of service as counselor coordinator in the Umoda and Special Programs. And then six and seven are both retiring with 36 years of service in our Campus Safety Division. Thank you. We heard tonight of the wonderful report, and I can imagine that these two probably know every square inch of this campus and sure appreciate all of their service and keeping our campus safe. Thank you. Oh, I didn't mention their names. Michael Gonzalez and Michael Burnell. Thank you.
Well done. Is there any public comment on the consent item, agenda items? Having said that, could I get a motion to approve the consent items? Trustee Aguilar drives second.
Second motion.
Trustee Nicolau, student trustee?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, we have to have a roll call.
Trustee Hinton is in the meeting room. So trustee Hinton, if you can unmute yourself and show your video, please. Trustee Hinton, are you there?
Okay, let's take the vote. I think we already did.
Here she is, sure is, here she is. You can unmute.
Nancy, it looks like we're going to approve the consent item. Are you in favor of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Aguilar? Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Nicolau?
Aye.
President Richards?
Yes.
The motion is, or the vote is six in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries.
On item nine, we've had some discussions. Trustee Beggs has kind of spearheaded this, where we basically put a letter together, which I think you all reviewed. We're working with our lobby firm through the chancellor, and we're trying to get some changes to the Brown Act that would be conducive to allowing people to participate. So I think we're looking for a motion to approve this.
So moved.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Just thank you for the work on this, Lesla. It's awfully long. Is it, is that okay? I mean, I know some, after about the first page.
That was actually approved by the consultants.
Yeah, I understand.
Lobbying firm that knows, everybody said they-
They like it.
Yeah, they edited and, yeah, yeah. I guess people in the audience can't see it, but anyway. I'm okay with it. If they are, they're the ones who know. And they actually told us that this is going to be reviewed because of the sun setting. So now is the time to get to the legislators.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Do we have any comments?
Nancy, did you want to say something?
I just want to say thank you. I'm the reason at this point that most of this is going on, and it's greatly appreciated. And I'm going to abstain from the vote because it is primarily on my behalf, but I think it's important to realize that with the physical challenges like we did with Jim Solomon a few years ago, these are really needed changes.
Thank you.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Henkine of Sainsbury. Trustee Nicolau?
Aye.
President Richards?
Yes.
Vice President Aguilar? The vote is five in favor, one abstention. Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to 9.2, I know the Finance Committee has looked at this. Trevor, anything to add on the report?
Got a lot of comments, I mean, too.
A motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second. Antoni Aguilar? Student trustee?
Aye.
Please, do we have to call the roll every time? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, we do. Thank you. Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
President Richards?
Yes.
Vice President Aguilar? Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Okay, 9.3 is to approve funding for Columbia College Child Care Center, continue funding application fiscal year 2026. Is that motion approved?
So moved.
Nancy, you're going to be the second. Student trustee?
Aye.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Thank you. President Richards?
Yes.
Vice President Aguilar?
Yes.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Vote is six, zero. Motion carries.
Okay, 9.4 is approving of the academic calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second for two years, correct?
Trustee Davis, yes. Student trustee?
Aye.
It's just for clarification. The first is to approve the 5.6 and the 6.7 would be tentatively adopt.
Correct. Okay, please call the roll.
Trustee Nicolau?
Aye.
President Richards?
Yes.
Vice President Aguilar?
He said no.
No. Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Vote is five in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
Now we have a board policy second reading.
Evening trustees, thank you, President Richards. Before you, you have three policies that are up for a second reading. Please note that all of these three policies were previously pulled at the board level for further review. The Board Policy Committee is recommending that the full board accept the revisions that are presented in the agenda and approve these policies.
Beggs, any comment?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve? Antoni Aguilar, second. Trustee Davis?
Yes, second.
Student trustee?
Aye.
President Richards?
Yes.
Vice President Aguilar?
Yes.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Nicolau?
Aye.
Vote is six, zero. Motion carries.
9.6, we have a first reading.
Yes. The first reading on these six policies, again, these policies were previously pulled at the board level for further review. The Board Policy Committee is recommending that the full board accept the revisions as presented in the agenda and conduct a first reading. However, I wanted to note that the chancellor's office did receive a comment that came in from someone that was watching the video via YouTube and wasn't able to submit a question during the time that they took comment during the meeting. So I wanted to read their statement. The statement says, "I wanted to reach out and let you know that I was attending the board policy meeting on Monday on YouTube and had a question about BP 7600 that I didn't have an opportunity to ask. I noticed that lines 17 through 21 are crossed out in red, and part of this language is dedication to eradicating racism. Given that there is a board of trustees resolution, excuse me, against racism, I am curious to why this language was crossed out. Can you please provide rationale for deleting the given the board's commitment expressed in the resolution condemning racism and affirming its ongoing commitment to serving its diverse student population?"
Are you prepared to answer that question?
Am I prepared? No, that would be prepared of the board's- Do we know why they couldn't attend the meeting? Because we didn't even, because- They were viewing it via YouTube and- Oh, because? There's no comments on YouTube, so- Oh, because Nancy couldn't come, right? Okay. Trustee Hinton, I apologize. Trustee- Trustee Hinton could not, okay. Join via Zoom and wasn't able to provide us to join the meeting by AB 2449.
I'll entertain a motion-
just asking for the rationale.
Okay.
It would be another policy meeting, but however, this is brand new language and new language, if it is stripped out, is on the first reading, when it comes back as a second reading, is no longer there. So that's the reason why the question is being presented right now.
I'm sorry.
I believe it could still be addressed in your.
Addressed, it's not going to be.
I think it was addressed in a prior meeting to this, to the last one, when we first made that decision. We didn't make that decision at the last one, they just noticed that.
All right, that's, are you 9.7?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Okay, under BP 2410, the board reserves a right to direct revisions of the administrative procedures should they, in the board's judgment, be inconsistent with the board's own policies. The Board Policy Committee has completed their preview of the eight administrative procedures listed in the agenda and they are presenting their recommendations for revisions to the full board for acceptance as presented in the agenda. After the board takes action on the acceptance, the Board Policy Committee is asking the full board to direct the revisions to the chancellor to revise the administrative procedures to align with the corresponding policy.
Professor McKissick, you okay with this?
Could you clarify the question?
This, you're always up on these administrative procedure policies. Are you okay with this?
Well, I'm not sure. Thanks for asking, right? And I think the faculty associations in the past have supported our ongoing consultation process that we call the policy and procedure review process, okay? So I think it's very clear to everyone that the board may direct changes in administrative procedures to make them consistent with board policies. And I'm not really hearing a contradiction of this, but what the faculty associations agreed to and believe they were hearing was this, that we're maintaining our previous policy and procedure review process in that board may recommend changes in APs. Of course, the final decision on that is our chancellor's, that the board may recommend changes in APs. So I hope that answers your question.
Can I get a motion to approve? Trustee Aguilar?
Second.
Trustee Davis, student trustee?
Same.
All in favor, please call the roll. Please call the roll.
Vice President Aguilar?
Yes.
Trustee Beggs?
Clarify for me, I got distracted. What number are we on?
We're on, we're on.
9.7.
9.7, which Professor McKissick said is good, so.
Okay, but it's not the first reading because the first readings are just for information.
9.7.
Administrative procedures.
Okay. Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Nicolau? President Richards?
Yes.
Vote is six, zero, motion carries.
Okay, 9.8, I'd like to get a resolution to make this, to recognize Native American heritage month. Can I get a motion?
Yes, move for approval.
Trustee Davis, second student trustee?
Aye.
Your vote?
Second is who?
Student trustee, he can't do that? Okay, trustee Aguilar. I was trying to get him in there. All right, I tried to get him in there. Please call the roll.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Nicolau? President Richards?
Yes.
And Vice President Aguilar?
Yes.
The vote is six, zero, motion carries.
Okay, we're going to combine 10.1 and 10.2, so requests for future agenda items and board comments. Trustee Beggs, any?
I do not have any comments this time. I just wanted to shock you.
Very good. Student trustee?
No comments.
Trustee Davis?
Thank everyone for their, your presentations tonight, your comments and all. I wanted to, I'm so pleased to hear that CSU Stanislaus wants to bring courses up there to the college and that, that the walls, or if there are any walls, or the silo mentality is, you know, disappearing and we're really seeing that cooperation with our nearest university. And that's just so good to hear. Thank you for sharing that.
Trustee Nicolau?
I just wanted to thank President Sanders for allowing me to join the little field trip. I had a great time. The tour was great, I learned a lot, but I really enjoyed spending time with our staff through the CTE and the ag program. And I think the lunch discussion was probably the best part of the whole event, so thank you.
Took my stuff, but thank you, President Sanders. That was, that was a really good little trip. And, and for me, being able to go there and see, seeing everybody who went from, from CTE, I mean, when I saw those guys, I was like, wow, that was the best part of it. Talking to the professor from electronics, I mean, my God, he blew my mind. He's amazing. And just seeing everybody who works at that department, at those departments go over there and then talking to another college that kind of does the same thing that we do and how much emphasis they put on that. I mean, I've been working on this for, so thank you for you for making it happen. I really appreciate it. And my other, what was my comment? Oh, I just want to say something about my election. I didn't get a chance to meet my opponent, but I just want to say how much I respect her and appreciate because it takes a lot of commitment and to put your name out there and run for elections. And she did a great job and I'm humbled and honored by my community that they support me and I'm going to continue to work on behalf of them, so thank you. I don't know, maybe I have one contingency around here, somebody, maybe? No? Okay.
Patrick, Marcus, Lena, fantastic job on getting honored again. Thanks to everyone who came and commented tonight, I really appreciate it. The next regular meeting of the board of trustees will be December 13th, yes. Oh, Nancy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. I just want to just say thanks for being able to attend.
Very good. With that, we're adjourned.